Good morning, we will call the June 7, 2022 City Council Meeting to Order. I'll ask Councilman Pickens to lead us in the invocation and pledge, if you will please stand.
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, bless the city, bless the city officials here that are working to bring great things to this city. I ask you to look out, or overlook rather, our first responders. Make sure that they are safe in the conduct of their duties. Also, I want you to bless the men and women who serve this nation in uniform, and those who have suffered great loss over the last month or so. Please be with them and cure and make their hearts feel much, much better. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is roll call, and I will maybe just take a moment to recognize Marquesha Johnson with roll call. He's joined us as a new City Council Administrator, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here, and Marquesha, you'll note that all council members are present. Approval of the minutes, council received a copy of the minutes emailed to them. There are no additions or corrections to the minutes, they will stand approved as read. We do have one recognition today. I'll ask Mr. Charles Freeman and Ms. Lynn Hennig, they will join me at the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is my pleasure to present a certificate of appreciation to Mr. Charles Freeman for having served on our civil service board. Mr. Freeman has completed his eight-year tour of duty with us. For outstanding service and commitment, Mr. Freeman, we would like to present this certificate of award of appreciation to you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Senator.
All right, item six, invitation for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any item on first reading, at that time you can be recognized. You can address the council on any item under first reading. First reading, item one, consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 2949 Highway 45 bypass from OC Office Center District to SC 1 Plan Commercial District comprising six point seven acres more or less.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of it to you. This is a change from an office zoning to a more retail commercial zoning. The area around the bypass frontage road in that area is sort of a mixed use, and the uses for the property are going to be more lean toward the retail side of things. So that's why they're asking for the rezoning, and again, the Planning Commission has recommended it to you.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and do I have a motion?
So moved.
So motions are second.
Second.
Any further discussion from council?
In the interest of transparency, we are developing across the 45 bypass there.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion carries.
Item two is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at Ashport Road, Shallow Springs subdivision, from RS Single Family Residential District to RS 2 Single Family Residential District comprising of 26.61 acres more or less.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. This was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending it to you. This zoning class is single-family in nature. The only difference is it allows a lot size that's a little bit smaller. This is so that the area that's adjoining the school site, that's going to be located out on Ashport Road, they're wanting to give an opportunity for some young families to locate near that school, and then they'll transition that development back to the same lot sizes that are in the rest of Shallow Springs.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second, this is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion carries.
All right, item three is in consideration of an ordinance to close Jefferson Alley, located between South Royal Street, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, and Short Street.
You have the materials pertinent to this alley closure. This alley used to run all the way through what used to be the old motor parts and bearing property, and that portion of the alley was closed some years ago. This is the remaining part, and First Baptist has asked to close this, and the adjoining property owner has entered in an approval of that, of the two property owners that are affected by it, so that they can consolidate what they call the parsonage back into the rest of their property. So the Planning Commission has recommended approval of this to you.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. This is an item on first reading, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion carries, nine to zero.
Item four is consideration of an ordinance to close an alley located between 118 McCowitt Street, 317 North Highland Avenue, and close the remaining portion of White Street North, located between 117 West Dedrick Street and 309 North Highland Avenue.
You have the materials pertinent to this alley closure. This was predicated by the Scarlet Rope Project that are constructing a new home there on McCowitt, and they asked this alley be closed. They also approached the other property owner served by this, and they are requesting the closure also. So everyone that's affected by it is all right with the closure, and the Planning Commission has recommended it to you.
All right, any questions from council?
Move the approval.
Second.
And a motion and a second. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion carries, nine to zero.
All right, on the second reading, item one is consideration of a resolution to adopt a plan of service and ordinance to annex and propose zoning of property for an area referred to as Macklemore, submitted by Surveying Services Incorporated comprising of 66.94 acres more or less, located at Jack Exum Lane. Proposed zoning is RS 1 FH Single Family Residential Special Flood Hazard District. This item was passed on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman McKelvey, second by Councilman Dodd. Any questions or further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Item two is a consideration of a resolution to adopt a plan of service and ordinance to annex the proposed zoning of property for an area referred to as Ross, submitted by John Ross on behalf of Ross Family Partnership comprising of 61.6 acres more or less, located at US Highway 412 East. Proposed zoning is I 2 Light Industrial District.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item three is proposed budget amendment for sale of land in the amount of $8,748,688.60.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment to the Solid Waste Fund for roof replacement in the amount of $157,212.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to replace sections 1-410, 1-411 of the Code of Ethics, which were adopted in October 2006 under ordinance number 2006038, and are codified under Title 1, Chapter 4 of the Code of Ethics Ordinances of the City of Jackson, Tennessee.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, nine to zero.
All right, on to new business. Item one is a consideration of proposals for storm water condition assessment and master planning. We have City Engineer Tom Wolf, and we'll have these proposals from Gresham Smith and Kim Lee Horn.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. In your packet you should have two proposals, one from Gresham Smith, a second one from Kim Lee Horn with regards to a storm water assessment that the city was going to undertake. They have a power presentation that they would like to present, and then move into any discussion that we may have on the proposals and/or any questions with regards to the PowerPoint.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Dusty May is here with Kim Lee Horn, and I have Justin Avant with Gresham Smith with me today. In the interest of time, we've combined the presentation to cover a lot of the material together, and because of that, our scope of services is pretty much identical, they're just different watersheds. And so I'll kind of go ahead and dive in in the interest of time. But this is a general summary of the scope of work that you see before you in our proposals. And beginning with survey and geodatabase development for these watersheds, you know, essentially, we're going to have survey crews that go out and capture, you know, data for inlets, culverts, you know, every piece of infrastructure that's located within these watersheds, and they're going to develop a geodatabase. And what I mean by that is, they take the data, you know, it's collected, and they develop a database that is then used, imported into GIS for use by the city in the future, and then also for use by the rest of our team for the conditions assessment and flood modeling. Once that geodatabase is put together, we will upload it to tablets, go out. Our crews and Gresham Smith's crews will go out and actually physically walk the watershed and perform a conditions assessment. Justin will kind of highlight, you know, what that entails here in a little bit. But it'll basically rate the condition of the storm water infrastructure that's in place. We will also perform existing conditions flood modeling. And that, you know, is basically taking the streams, the rivers, the pipes, culverts, and connecting all that data together to run an existing conditions flood model, which is a snapshot of the way the watershed has developed to date. The future conditions flood modeling takes into account future land use changes within the watershed to account for development and additional impervious area that could happen in the future. Once we complete those two, then we will develop a list of recommendations. If we have any areas of concern, we will run alternatives analysis on those areas and come up with solutions to alleviate those flooding problems. All that will be summarized in a master plan report with an appendix that has a capital projects list of those alternatives and their associated cost. The first watershed that I want to talk briefly about is the one that we're going to be looking at. It's Anderson Branch. You can see it here, you know, shown on this figure. Generally, the areas that we're going to be looking at are Jackson, to the area to the north is going to be Jackson State and North Parkway. To the east is going to be the area around the Kellogg's Plant. You know, to the west is almost touching North Royal. And then to the south, you know, Anderson Branch makes its way back behind the fairgrounds and then outlets to the South Fork River. It's roughly three and a half square miles in size. We have about seven miles of open channel. The survey crews are going to be capturing roughly 117 cross-sections within there for our modeling and survey efforts. And then we've estimated there's going to be approximately 1,100 storm structures. So those are culverts, inlets, infrastructure that's located within that watershed. And I'll turn it over to Justin to talk about it.
Thank you, thank you, Dusty. This area that you see here on the screen is the area that Gresham Smith will be focusing on. This is the Kane Creek and the Bond Creek basins. You can see there the Green Basin on the west is Kane Creek, and the Purple Basin there east of that is Bond Creek. And something that's, I kind of want to highlight here that's a little different than Anderson Branches, there's a significant portion of both of these basins that are outside city limits. You can see the city limits there in the exhibit. So the work that we'll be doing in terms of survey work will be all inside city limits. We won't be doing anything outside city limits. But we do have to do some hydrologic computations to determine the flows, you know, from outside that contribute. You know, the Kane Creek Basin, you can see there, there's a lot, all that area flows through the Bemis area. So we have to do some calculations to, you know, figure out and understand what those flows are and how they contribute to the areas that's inside the city. It's 2.4 square miles, that's the only area inside the city limits, obviously outside is more. And five and a half miles of open channel, we've estimated 70 cross-sections and approximately 840 storm structures. So now I'm going to get into the sort of a different part, the condition assessment approach. You can see here this flow chart that we've used to do the condition assessment. There's, you know, some pre-field services that we do. A big part of that is developing the list of attributes that we want to collect. You know, when we go out in the field and we're looking at all these structures, we're getting a lot of data and a lot of information. And we've got a list of attributes that we've used on previous projects, but we want to review that list with the city to make sure we're capturing all of the data and information that the city wants. So once we have that attribute list approved and the survey has been done, we send surveyors out to locate all of the storm structures so our field crews can locate them and know where they are. Then we send field crews out, it's two-man crews that go out, and, you know, they're putting their eyes on every structure and putting all this information into the database, you know, the condition, the structure type, those kinds of things. And then there's the actual development of the database, which includes taking all this data, sort of analyzing it, putting it into GIS system, and determining, you know, what repairs need to be made for different assets, et cetera. There's a QA QC process obviously involved in that. And then finally would be any deliverables to the city. That's going to be the GIS database that we talked about that shows all of the assets. There's an inventory report that will list all of the structures you have in the network, the types, et cetera. And then a CIP report or maintenance report, which lists and prioritizes the rehab that needs to be done, a recommended approach to that, and a cost to do that work. This is just a screenshot of, a GIS screenshot of a network. You can sort of see there, you know, hopefully what it's going to look like. The red nodes are your, you know, in this case would be your inlets and manholes, et cetera. And then the black lines represents your pipe network. So you can just get an understanding of kind of what the GIS looks like. In this one, we've got parcel data that we've got from, this is another project, but from the city and the road network, so you can sort of see how everything overlays on top of each other. And this is just a zoom in of the same, the same GIS network. You can see again some structures and pipes. But this also highlights all of the attribute data that you can collect. You know, to give you an idea of when you're in the system, you can click on an asset and quickly see all of this information. Some of the attributes, I don't know if you can see there, but, you know, some of, just an example of some of the information you're going to be getting is the structure type, whether it's, you know, an inlet, a manhole, a head wall, et cetera. Material, concrete, brick. Condition rating, whether it's in good condition, poor condition. Date of, you know, the date of the inspection, all sorts of several other types of data. All that'll be available in the GIS database. And this just is a screenshot of somebody out in the field. If you're, you know, driving around Jackson during one of these projects and see something like this, this is just a guy out in the field collecting the data. You can see even his vest, and he's got his data collector there where he's looking at the asset and inputting all of the relevant data. And then finally, this is just an example of a potential rating system that we may use for the structures, just to give you an idea of, you know, we rate them one to 10 from a one being your worst, to something that's completely failed and collapsed, to 10 to something being relatively brand-new, and the remaining life of those and everything in between. And now Dusty, I think's going to talk more about, yeah.
Yeah, and so this is an example of what we call like a sub-basin map. Once we begin the modeling, we have our watershed area, but we really drill down to like sub-basins within that watershed. And this is kind of just an example that we wanted to show. So you see the level of detail that we're going to be looking at. And these are almost like neighborhoods, you know, like a street or two, or, you know, be a sub-basin. And that's the level of modeling detail that we're going to go into. And then this is an example land use map for that same project. And kind of back to what I hit on earlier with the future conditions modeling, the land use is really important because that is what is going to drive, you know, or outline future development within that watershed. And as we're doing our modeling, we want to take those into account because if they were developed at some point in the future, that impervious area and everything's going to be added, that runoff is going to have a lot of downstream effects. So you definitely want to be accounting for that in your modeling. And then this is an example of what Justin, you know, showed earlier, the pipe network within GIS. We're going to be modeling a lot of different storm events, the two, the five, 10, 25, 50, 100. And in each one of those, we're going to show these nodes, where you can see the red dots there. Those are nodes that are like an inlet or a junction point manhole that is surcharging. You know, so water is actually, you know, coming out of that. And then the red lines that you'll see there are pipes that have exceeded capacity. And so we'll do those for each one of those storm events, so you can tell, you know, where capacity has exceeded or where, you know, flooding may be a concern. We will also develop inundation mapping or flood mapping that shows, you know, areas of concern and then their corresponding, you know, flood depths. And those will be developed for all those storm events as well. This is a slide, you know, we will be calibrating the flood modeling to ensure that it's as accurate as possible. And this is just a slide, and it shows NEXRAD, you know, coverage of our area. You can see Memphis there and Nashville right in the middle. But this is important because we will actually pull NEXRAD radar data to run storm events, and then use that with real-time gauge data in the streams and locating high-water marks to make sure that our modeling is as accurate as possible. And so as we're, you know, our field crews are out there doing the conditions assessment, if a storm event comes through like last night, we can actually go download that data, run a rainfall grid over the watershed, and then have our crews verify the depths that they're seeing within these channels. And after that modeling is completed, you know, we will have areas, you know, that we want to develop some recommendations to either replace failed infrastructure or reduce flooding. And so this is a snapshot from a study that we completed, and it's just showing the recommendation that could be, you know, is sort of an example that could be developed as a part of this. And those recommendations will also have, you know, associated, you know, cost that we've developed so that you're, you know, aware of how much capital, you know, it'll take to replace those. And that'll be summarized in that master plan report and capital projects list. And then one other item that I did want to touch on, you know, Justin and I talked about, all this data will be turned over, you know, to the city. So all the survey data, the conditions assessment rating, it'll all be located, you know, in that geodatabase with photos. It'll be turned over to the city so that Tom or any city employee, whether it's field crews or, you know, somebody in the office, can literally just pull up, you know, that data within GIS, click on the nodes. They'll have a photo, you know, that shows the location of it along with all the attributes that Justin highlighted. And that, I think that kind of sums up the presentation, we're happy to answer any questions.
So before we get into any questions specific from council, Tom, can you briefly, briefly talk about bigger picture? These are two pilots on the plan to expand out, to do citywide. How are we utilizing American Rescue Plan TDEC funds to do that? Just so the public can be aware on record of, that we're just not going to focus just on these two areas, and we're going to be done of expanding the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
The purpose of, the city is approximately, I believe, about 50 square miles. What we, when we started looking at this, the intent is to study the entire city. But it was recommended in our conversations with the consultants that we pick an area and call it a pilot project. That way, we can take a smaller area, develop what we need and what we don't need, get our record keeping, get our baseline drawings going. So as we move into the next phases, it should be a little bit less expensive because we already have the base plans to work from in the format. But by doing it in a pilot project setup, we can fine-tune as we go through. Do we really need this data? Do we need to collect more? Are we okay with where we're at? Should we change this concept, or should we change something there? From that, then, it would be, we should have a very good handle on moving forward with the rest of the city. The city is going to receive approximately $9.3 million from TDEC that will be used for this pilot, the two pilot studies, as well as moving forward with the entire city assessment. I know there'll be a, I don't want to call it a deposit, but the money the city will put into it as well, and I believe it'll be 10% based on collaboration with the county. So that'll give us another about 1.4 million. So we're probably looking around 10 to 10 and a half million dollars to do this assessment. The TDEC money, there are two very strict deadlines that they've established in the use of these funds. One of them is the money has to be allocated by September of 2024. The monies have to be spent by September of 2026. I sat through a presentation from TDEC with regards to this project, and several questions came up about, you know, what happens if we turn in this project as part of this TDEC money? And we put five projects on our list, and we only get three of them done, what happens? And the comment was, TDEC's not going to be happy. There is going to be no leeway in these deadlines, done. And I talked to the woman that was doing the presentation during the break, and she strongly suggested that the money be used, in our case, because I was pretty specific as to what we want to do, would be better to use it for the assessment process, get through it. Because she also went through a program, several programs, that there may be additional funds available through the state to actually do the construction work itself. So it's going to be a long haul to get this, and I think within, once we get our pilot project information put together, we should be in pretty good shape to move forward. Based on input I've had from a number of council members and discussions with the mayor and the consultants is, and I've told them, don't be surprised if we come back to you probably once they get started on a survey for proposals to get the rest of the city done because of the short leash we're on in using that money. We don't want to give the money back to the state, we want to use it. So sometime probably within the next three or four months, these gentlemen will be coming back with a process to do the rest of the city.
I think we, November is the deadline, November the first.
Yes, we have to have the...
The grant application.
The application and the...
For the full-blown project.
Correct, correct.
Mayor, how long, how long would the process take, the evaluation? How long would it take during the survey?
The survey should take about three to four months, probably. And then once that data is gathered, then we'll start the conditions assessment. And then the modeling work will start concurrent with the conditions assessment. Beginning to end, it could be, you know, 12 to 18 months for the full master plan report to be completed. But a lot of these items can go concurrently at once the survey work is completed.
Is that, is that in reference to this pilot project is 12 to 18? And the larger scope, I would imagine, take a little bit longer than that?
Yes, yes. Now, that's what I was kind of mentioning with the work can be going concurrently. The survey work, you know, will start immediately, should be complete within three or four months and then the conditions assessment will probably take a couple of months. At that point, the modeling work will begin and the master plan development will begin. But survey work, you know, will be complete early fall. And so that will free them up to begin work on other watersheds if needed.
Okay.
Both consultants are using the same surveyor to get continuity with what we're doing. And once that information is all available and they get into their modeling aspect of this project, they will be doing, they can be both working on their modeling at the same time. So when, it's not going to, well, Kim Lee Horn has to finish theirs before Gresham Smith can start on theirs. So once we get past the survey and the conditions, they'll pretty much take their areas and start developing their reports, their data, the recommendations and stuff will be done independently, but at the same setup and format, everything's going to be consistent.
Okay.
Question, just to clarify for myself, not an expert in this area, when we're talking storm water, excuse me, and then we're using the word watershed, are we using those interchangeably or is there a difference?
No, there's a difference. The watershed is the area, you know, that drains. So for Anderson Branch, that watershed is basically the map that I described here. So I think I can control it now. But if a drop of water, you know, if a rain happens, a drop of water falls, the watershed is going to be the area that drains, you know, any drop that falls within that area.
That specific spot, okay. And then stormwater is the...
Yeah, stormwater is the rain that falls.
Gotcha.
And runs off from rooftops, driveways, streets, any impervious area.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I think this is one of the most important things we can do for the future of the city. I think we're blessed to have this TDEC funding to get this done. It's a burden that we're going to have to deal with at some point and we need to figure out how big the elephant is so we can start eating it.
It's going to be a big elephant. Council member, it's going to be a big elephant.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to move forward with this happily.
Have a motion and a second. All right, any further discussions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Item two is consideration of a resolution to adopt a bicycle pedestrian and greenways master plan. Counsel, you remember, we presented the plan last month, insulted, said we didn't have to have a resolution, the state said we had to have one, so here's your resolution. Have a motion and a second? And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three is consideration of contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and City of Jackson for mowing and litter removal, contract CMA twenty-three seventy, and then routine maintenance state routes, contract CMA twenty-three seventy-one.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is consideration of a contract with Mary Mays for janitorial services for the Safe Hope Center.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel.
Good morning, Mayor.
Bids were received for janitorial services for the Safe Hope Center. This will be a weekly janitorial service. This bid was sent out to seventeen vendors and three vendors had submitted bids. Purchasing Department and the Safe Hope Center recommend awarding this bid to Mary Mays of Jackson as the best bid received.
Any questions from counsel? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to...
I'm sorry.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five is consideration of a contract with West Tennessee Coffee for coffee services for various departments.
Proposals were received for coffee services for various departments. This was sent out to six vendors and we received three vendor proposals. An evaluation team comprised of Amari Choudres, Jeff Shepherd, Councilman Ross Pretty, Dean Emerson, and purchasing recommend awarding to West Tennessee Coffee Service as the best proposal received.
All right, any questions from counsel? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item six is a consideration of a contract with Extra Duty Solutions for JPD Extra Duty Administrative Services.
Proposals were received for Extra Duty Administrative Services for the JPD. These services include coordination and scheduling of officers, billing the clients along with collecting payments, securely sending funds to the city, and twenty-four seven customer and city support. We received proposals from five vendors. An evaluation team comprised of Councilman Ernest Brooks, Robert Gamble, Gary Benton, Evelyn Austin, and Susan White recommend awarding this to Extra Duty Solutions as the best proposal received. The service is at no cost to the city. A fee will be charged to the customer at a rate of nine percent of the invoiced amount with a minimum of three dollars and fifty cents per officer hour.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Zach. Item seven is consideration of committee and board appointments versus the Civil Service Board, the reappointment of John Hodges.
So moved.
Have a motion? And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, and this is just information for the counsel. This is an employee elected, Jason Hollowell is the newest member for the Civil Service Board, is the employee elected member. And then ethics committee appointments, I will, I sent an email out yesterday, but I'll read this out for everyone. Counsel appointments, Carla Pollard, Mona Miller, and Freeman McKendra. Mayor appointments, Hunter Baker, Joe Brasher, Danielle Hardy, and Trinetta Atwater. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item eight is proposed budget amendment, American Rescue Plan, the amount of eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Next is proposed budget amendment, the amount of zero dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, this next one is sunshock and budget amendments less than ten thousand. And number eleven is a consideration of minimum voices over ten thousand.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
No further business come before the counsel. Meeting is adjourned.